Notification to the general public of the meeting. Send to the city clerk of Hoboken on Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024, with a copy of the agenda to be posted on the Volton Board in City Hall, Hoboken Library and Hoboken Police Department, and posted on the authority website on Tuesday, July 2nd, 2024. I direct the minutes of this meeting to state that I have announced that adequate notice of this meeting has been given as required by the Open Public Meeting Act. Roll call director?
President. Dan Denver, President. Anthony Forbes.
President.
Barbara Reyes.
Yeah.
Jean Rodriguez.
Yeah.
Michael Russo.
President.
Erica Seitzman.
President.
James Sanford.
Can I have the...
Carmen Vega, before you come up again, as you all know, you have five minutes. I just ask you to be respectful to everyone. Thank you. Yes.
Good evening, my name is Carmen Vega. I live in an apartment in Sixth and Barter. Sixty is an over, thank you. What I wanted to discuss this evening was two different topics. One is about... I would like to discuss on Saturday, an event happened here. Someone was sleeping in the back. And my understanding is that that individual stayed here with someone, and that individual has been removed. That was a tenant here on the fifth floor. Now, my question is that I got a call on that saying, you know, what was I gonna do? And they said, there's nothing I can do. You gotta call. What I prefer you to do is speak with security. Let him handle that. Be that it's about that time. So I believe that's what happened. Now, another question. That's what happened, and I believe she was removed. But one of the things I want to know is that if someone is banned from coming here, Mr. Recko, I believe that for someone to be banned, there has to be some type of notification or something in hand? I believe to be given to security, whatever. Because we, the tenants, that live here, cannot take it upon ourselves to tell people whether they could come in or not from this building. And that does happen from time to time. So I feel that if that was to occur, you know, that's something that security should be handling as far as whether they could come in or not in this building. Because each individual here pays rent for their apartment. But I understand that we want to monitor people coming in and out of this building that could harm other people. But she's harmless, I know that for a fact. The individual's harmless. So I just feel like, you know, she's going through a tough time, whatever, whether she went through it at the moment or she's going through it, but she's homeless on top of that. So we have to be a little bit understanding, a little compassionate for others. That's number one. Number two is, I believe there was a package stolen today, and I'm a little bit concerned because, you know, I order stuff myself. So I strongly believe, Mr. Recko, that we had to have a meeting stating for the seniors to come down or even send a flyer to the apartment stating what is the protocol. I did question, that's why you saw me inside. But Natalie, having these discussions, there is something in the door, but I believe that the person got so probably nervous or whatever that they just felt that they didn't wanna... They couldn't comprehend to call the police because A is a police officer person to call to make a report so like that they're looking at cameras and apprehended the individual that did the crime. Because that is a crime, stealing something like that. But basically, that's it, that's what I have to say. But is anything about any individual? Because I feel that we can't tell people that they're banned from this building because we don't have that authority. But second of all, if that person comes to the building and someone here that lives here, a tenant invites them in, then, you know, there's not much we could do about it unless something happens. You know, I know we're trying to avoid that, but, you know, what is the protocol, Mr. Recko? But you need to inform the tenants here what, how it's supposed to deal with it and what it was supposed to do with it. And, you know, security. Another thing is that I come in different... Not different hours, I shouldn't say it like that. But anyway, I do come in different type... Yeah, different hours with my mom. And sometimes I'm gonna come late at night. And I never get questioned with my ID. So I think there's still a problem with the IDs as far as, you know, questioned. The other day I was here and I noticed the table was not outside. I could tell you the day it was. It was, um, it was Sunday, had to be. And my understanding is I asked, oh, you're not sitting down? They said, no, I'm gonna sit in the kitchen. Well, from the kitchen, you can't watch us coming in and out of the front door. So I guess security is at it again. So, you know, and the problem that we do have, that security... I mean, they have to do their job, but they get paid to do what they're expected of. And sometimes, lack of help is not gonna help us either. You know, you can't be right for one thing and then turn around and do other things for... You know, that's not the... That's not what you're getting... That's not the contract that was signed here. And there's a lot of money involved here, which I do, I am aware of. So because of that, I wanted to inform you about that. And again, the IDs are not being questioned at all. You can come in and out and no IDs are being questioned. And I'm saying it for myself, I'm not saying it for any other tenant. I'm saying it for myself. Thank you, have a good evening, and good to see you all.
Adrian Romens?
I need a timeline for when my sister can expect a moving date for her transfer. If her elevator is gonna be out of order, she needs to be moved out of there because I cannot climb all those stairs to assist her. And she cannot be climbing all those stairs to go shopping and do laundry and all of those things. So if the elevator's gonna be shut down again, she's asking when her unit's gonna be... She was already assigned the unit. She's just waiting on when the unit will be rented for her. And when is the back door of her building, which is 220 Jackson, be open again? And that monstrosity of a quote-unquote ramp gonna be removed? A, it's an ice or B, it looks like it's flimsy as toilet paper. And having only one entrance into the building where it's not wheelchair accessible is a problem. So I wouldn't wanna have baby carriage on that thing. We've had this issue before, and we'll say it again. When notices are sent out, they should be sent out on the same day or the date needs to be changed. We got an inspection notice on Friday, July 5th. It was dated July 3rd. And because housing is only open Monday through Friday during business days, do not open holidays and weekends, that was not 24 to 48 hours notice for residents for inspection. Holidays and weekends don't count. So, you know, if you're gonna send out notices, they need to be sent out properly and not wrapped in the doorknob. They should be slid under, taped to the door, do what's what, but wrapping it in the door, I've noticed a lot of them on the floor. And maintenance is still not keeping the building clean. There's actually a dead rat on Sixth and Jackson, on Sixth Street, up against the wall. And it's probably been there all day because I noticed it earlier in the day. Thank you.
Patricia Waders?
Patricia, wait, just give me one second. I'm gonna record this for quality assurance purposes. Record, guys. As crazy as this may seem and conical, it hurts. It hurts. What I'm standing here tonight with, and this is the only way you can get a real indictment, is to record people. Because I see I'm not being taken seriously. I don't know the real role of a commissioner. But what I do know is the last couple of years, Barbara served twice again, Jean, you served twice again. You familiar with what go on in this city, girls? And you know we trust and can find you. And I'm gonna leave that there. My thing is commissioners, you know. You politically are pointed, so y'all never gonna get a path. Wait, just 'cause I'm gonna do what's right. Housing would have been changed 16 years ago from the first time I applied. But what hurt me is I still came to you with my arms open and my heart to embrace management, which y'all feel and consider to come here to run housing, when Dean DeWeaver disrespected Carmelo, the top director, and took that microphone out of his hand. I was there. And then they bring a man from North Carolina. When I seen the offer to Quasare, wait a minute, Wilmington? I just left Wilmington. Is his name Mark Recko? And I'm not making this up because you know it's the truth, Mr. Recko. I pulled him over, I said, hey, my daughter was just born in Wilmington. You from Onslow County? Right in the day I did my homework. I didn't share it with nobody, but I opened up my arms to you. I had friendly conversations. I used to go meet with him, and I said to his face, if you come in this town politically, we're gonna have a fight on our hands. Because I've only served the people. With that being said, I'm gonna read this into the record. I've been servicing this in a housing authority. There's four sheets here, and this is very important. Because people that come to this microphone should not and will not, if I can help it, be retaliated against. And counsel, get your opinion and writing, okay? Because no lawyer, I fear no lawyer. And what's sad is they know they're black unfortunate people, okay? With no resources, we can't afford a terminal. So that's where the abuse come in at. Let me just read this, what I wrote down. "Good Saturday morning, Honorable Ms. Kelly Peterson." Kelly Peterson is the director of HUD, which supersede you guys, okay? "It's about two weeks since last we spoke. Please forgive me for crying and being emotional on the phone on April 9th, 2024. It's hard seeing that HHA tenants continue to suffer. And they have such poor quality of life. Nonetheless, it is with great disappointment, I must say, that I'm being constantly impeded." "I am a victim of retaliation from Director Mark Recko and Frank because I've been a strong advocate for HHA for years. I am the only hope these people really have. See attached to pictures and crates and stacks and stacks of evidence, which is legal notarized letters, thanks to Jean Drayton, that taught me make sure to have the housing authority letterhead and it's notarized, okay? These directors has placed their target on my back and my family. Again, my daughter and son came out number one on the waiting list and do not have an apartment. But Mr. Recko forgot how many times I sat in his desk where people there don't qualify and they moved in already. Facts." All right, victims of their abuse and tampering with the waiting list and naming people and hurting them intentionally. This put us all in harm and dangerous situations if we continue to keep Mark Recko as our director. That, I agree, agreed that some of our... Some of they... This is what Kelly Peterson told me. It's gonna be hard, Patricia, because it's hard to find that a person is being unethical. Yes, Kelly, you told me it's hard to prove, but facts and records don't lie. I put everybody's folder I've been helping since the 70s, okay? Okay, facts, facts, again. And the only thing I'm asking how I'm wrapping it up, from the Housing Authority tenants that I've been advocating for for years, they are in fear of retaliation. Attached you will see crates and crates of milk crate of paperwork that I can provide if you will listen to me and continue to fight with me by coming out to HHA to conduct a thorough independent investigation. So guys, y'all got HUD knocking on y'all door. It's been here a couple of weeks. I'm not impressed, Mark Recko, because you wait for them to give you a letter and say, job well done. Because see, they don't know what's going on to how close doors. That's why. I put a paper here where I will see, because just because Vanessa deal with housing authority on a whole, or housing issues, she should be respected. HUD title should be known as such. People that do have complaint with housing issues, we go to her. She has no contact or no bearing on my situation. Let me just put that on the record for clarification purposes. Her job, being working in Hoboken, we come to her without complaints. That's the only reason she should see...
Thanks to Ms. Waders, your five minutes are up.
All right, see, see on this. I'm gonna surface these out on this chair, if you don't mind. On the back, it tells them that... Things you could put, whatever's going on in housing with respect to mold, rent, noise, transfer, changes, repairs, rats, illegal car towing. I need you to take this tonight and fill it out, okay? Give it to every... And I told you, Mike, I got yours. Give it to every commissioner on the board and your management. Please, Ms. Reyes. Okay, I'm gonna leave it because I didn't have enough to make copies. I'll have a few. I want this to be taken very serious, and I thank you for the extra time like you gave everybody else. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Waders. Kathy Feeney?
Yes, hello, everyone. I have made a storyboard. And the reason is because last night I spoke with the city council. It's kind of intimidating because I'm a writer, not a speaker. Thank you so much, I was embarrassed. I'm sorry to have to do this, but this is something that happened. And when people break the law, there has to be consequences. I'm here tonight to request that Chairwoman Commissioner Reyes resigns. And if she will not resign for this board, please remove her. I ask the city council to remove her. What's the reason?
Why would I ask this? Because Barbara Reyes has broken the terms of her HUD apartment lease. She's broken the food selling laws of the city of Hoboken and the state of New Jersey. She's been complicit and condoned other housing residents in their illegal food selling on HUD property. She has violated Article 5 of the ethics of the Board of Commissioners. She has broken federal law by conducting a business called Barbara's Cooking out of her apartment, her HUD apartment. It's not to be used for commercial or business. And she has not reported her income. When you don't report your income, that means that HUD doesn't match that income. And what happens is when you don't have a license to sell food, the fines are up to $1,000, six months in jail. And the thing is, when you sell food, that's some of the food you have on your menu, like macaroni and cheese. This is a certain kind of food that is called TCS. It has to really be monitored. It's a dangerous thing to sell food without a license. It's an illegal thing to sell food without a license. Now, how do I know all this happened? Well, Ms. Reyes told us. She told us. She posted menus on her Facebook. She's posted menus on her Instagram. And she also spoke at the June 13th meeting. And that's the day that I found out. And so we've got quotes here. On her Facebook, she goes, today's the day, place your orders. I assure you that you will not be disappointed. It will be done by noon. And then we've got quotes on the meeting. Glad to report it, I'll report whenever I made, yeah. Point is, I know plenty of people, plenty of individuals who sell food in the housing authority. I have, yes, I should get held just like every other resident. These are her menus. And she has condoned other people at the housing authority selling illegal food. Now, what happens when you sell illegal food? Someone can get sick and someone can die. Plus, it's illegal, you can't do that. It is, you are breaking state laws. She's broken federal laws by having a business out of her apartment. She's broken tenant laws by not reporting her income. What should happen to someone that does that? They lose their apartment. What happens when people sell illegal food? They go to jail or they're fined. So what I want to say to you guys, if Barbara Reyes does not resign or if the Board of Commissioners does not remove Barbara Reyes from this board, I've spoken with the city council last night, then, and I'd like counsel to maybe tell us, then everyone here is complicit. You are all complicit with these crimes. There are people on a main campus selling illegal food. So you're complicit with these crimes. And guess what else you're doing? For people like me, a pet walker and a cat sitter who report every penny I made, you are discriminating against me. And I happen to be a senior citizen. So maybe that's sort of like senior abuse too here going on. So, yeah, illegal discrimination from the HKA board and illegal discrimination from this board.
Why are you laughing?
Yeah, you are laughing.
Not laughing.
You are laughing. And if it's funny, if it's funny... Excuse me. Excuse me, I've still got my five minutes, right?
You actually have a minute and fifty seconds.
Yeah. Oh, maybe I'll just stand. Right. Because I want to tell you something. Here's a man. His name is Uncle Milton. We call him Milty, Uncle Milton. And he's closing his business at the end of the month. You know why? Because Uncle Milton does the right thing. He pays rent, he has licenses, he does everything by the book. Well, Uncle Milty can't afford to keep staying here up there at the Northwest Park. And the reason is because the Lescios came and are not all other places. So Uncle Milty's just gonna do catering. Now, you tell me the difference between you and Uncle Milton. Who are you? Who are you to be doing this illegally? And who are you to not report your income? When I walk my feet off and I'm a senior citizen, I'm older than you, I'm a widow, I'm a cancer survivor, and I report my income? It's not fair. I mean, it just isn't fair. It's illegal. And if you guys are complicit, then you're breaking the law too. Thank you.
Can we just keep it down back there, please?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Thank you, Madam Transmitter, for gathering people's attention. I appreciate you all, I appreciate members of the public. Madam Chair, as I do every time that now I'm able to get to the meetings, I appreciate also the so vocal here, it's hard to put my cane in. I just want to ask on agenda items for one quick moment, if we can go back to this, just quickly. And it's just questions, just for, as someone said, for clarification purposes. Those are two items, especially the last one that I just mentioned having to do with Fox Skills. If members of the public can get just a little bit more information, a little bit more clarity as to why that resolution is up for vote this evening, those questions would be greatly appreciated. And I would also like to announce in a personal form, I just want to say, Madam Chair, with all due respects to you and to all of the commissioners and all the people who work at the Hoboken Housing Authority, it's hard for us to sometimes not lose hope, but we try to hold on to hope as much as we can because that's the last thing that we should lose. So tonight, I just want to just give... There is a lot going on, there are a lot of issues. There are a lot of, I would say, problems. Yes, that's one of them. Two, because a lot of nuances, a lot of blame, and a lot of bigger point things. But that helps the residents nothing. The residents need their issues fixed, especially our elderly community. And we also have to remember that some people go through things. Sometimes this meeting is going on and something happens in your lives and with your families. Today, I just heard that a member of this, you know, this building, her daughter passed. And that's not an easy pill to take. They should be rallying around her. I know her as Matt Giallo's grandmother. So to her, my condolences and to her all my respects and want... What I want is that for everyone who's here in this room, for everyone that could be seeing it in the Youtubes and such, for all of us to take apart that even though we have differences, we cannot fix our differences by yelling at each other, number one. And number two, being a person that will not allow ourselves to come to any type of a point where we can say, well, I don't agree with you here, but I can find a point of view here that we can come to an agreement to. So tonight, I know that there are many other, perhaps members of the public that want to air whatever is new to them at the moment, but it is time for everyone's problems to be resolved, everyone's issues to be resolved, for there not to be rats in the buildings or anything like that. So that is just, let's work toward that. Let the proper authority take care of that. Let the residents make their complaints, that the residents also do their share to make sure that they are not contributing to the problem, not to blame in them. I would never do that. But what I'm saying is here is let's try to respect one another. Let's try to be fair to each other. And again, members of the public, I respect you and all of you commissioners. But let's try to lift up the conversation. Let's find solutions to the issues and the problems, whichever they are. Whichever they are, the ones that we mentioned this evening, the ones that we mentioned the last meeting. Let's find resolutions to the issues. And I thank you all for your attention, as well as you, Madam Chair, thank you for the time, thank you for the recognition. And to the members of the public, I hope that your answers get heard. Thank you very much, that was you all.
Good evening, girl. So I just have a quick question. And maybe you can give me an answer at the next meeting so that you have some time to go over the question, the data for the question that I'm asking. The reason why I'm asking is because I know that the request for proposals was recently released for the redevelopment. And I'm interested in knowing if there has been any analysis, one, on the percentage of households that meet the different income criteria in terms according to the HUD income limits? So what are the percentages, percentages that are low, moderate, very low, and median, I believe it is, which is like workforce? So what are the percentages of the population or of the units in the campus?
The current?
Yes, the current. And then the second thing that I'm interested in knowing, because I think that this is a very important factor that needs to be considered when you're thinking about redevelopment, is how many adult children are on the lease of their parents? And how many of those adult children have children? And the reason why I bring this up is because I'm constantly inundated and called, which I welcome all the calls and trying to help tenants resolve this issue, is that they, those individuals, are in need of housing. So how can we look at redeveloping housing and coming up with units, a number of units to be redeveloped, when we haven't really done any analysis of what the capacity is that we currently have? And so if you can help me with understanding what that number is, and it probably, it may take you a little bit longer than a month because I realize that that's a big question. But I would appreciate if you look at that because that's a significant and serious issue. And the whole thing about what I've heard in the past... Well, that's okay, I'll leave that for the next meeting. But if we can, if you can let me know, and this could be offline, you know how to contact me. But I'm really interested in knowing that number because that's the main concern, that one of the main concerns that I have. You can't redevelop and move parents, their children, and their children's children into a new unit. Thank you.
Motion for public question? Olive Fader?
Hi.
No.
Hi.
Olive Fader?
Hi.
Hi.
Director?
Motion to suspend the agenda to discuss...
There's a motion on the floor?
To discuss the illegal business activity?
There's a motion on the floor. Do we have a second?
Can we discuss it in the meeting so we can get through the process?
Well, we're gonna discuss it. We're gonna discuss it.
Is there a motion on the floor?
I have questions for counsel. The public has spoken, the public has asked.
Is there a motion on the floor? There's a motion. Okay, I'm sorry, there is second on the floor.
No second? No, no one wants a second? No one on the board wants to address your illegal business?
There was a motion on the floor, they did not pass. Can we move on, Director, to please?
No, we can't because at the very last meeting, at the very last meeting, there was a motion. It was voted down, but then we talked about it anyway because you want to talk about it. You wanted to talk about it. You littered the public.
I have not... I have not belittled anyone.
At the last meeting, at the last meeting, you went on your own, you went on your own brand.
Fault of you, stop.
Please stop.
This is, we're here for them.
Thank you.
Not for you, not for you, not for me, we're here for them. Stop. Let's get through a meeting, we could go, we could, we could do that later. Let's get the business done, that's all.
That is business. You gotta listen to this.
Last month, last month, you sent an email to the entire board, wanting to address this subject. Now we want to address it.
And that was addressed, and that was addressed.
It wasn't addressed. We were barely just scratching this.
Director, could we move on with the meeting?
There was a motion without a second, so I will move on.
Yeah, but you didn't direct it, you get to interview.
Counsel, you wanna have, you wanna offer an opinion? Counsel, do you wanna offer your opinion on anything?
Yes, he's in charge.
On what question?
There was a motion on the floor, it did not pass, and I asked.
Under the bylaws, the chair runs the meeting, the chair, there was no second to a motion, the chair has asked the meeting move on. So, but Mike, as a point of order, as a point of order, counsel, at the last meeting, there was a motion by myself, there was, it was then seconded by Commissioner Russo, there was a vote, it did not pass, but then we continued to talk about the subject anyway, because the chair, I guess, wanted to continue to belittle the public on this matter.
I was a belittler.
Counsel, this is, this is a question for counsel. Commissioner, you asked me a question, and I've answered it.
And he has answered.
So, so should we have continued speaking on the subject at the last meeting? At the last meeting, should we have continued speaking on the subject if that motion had failed? This is a point of order.
Yeah, but the subject is about lunch.
Commissioner, you asked me a question, I have answered it. You have not answered the question.
What I'm going to ask is, if we cannot forward, I will adjourn the meeting until everybody comes down, and then we can come back and start the meeting when we're ready.
Motion to adjourn.
Yes.
Chair, Chair, I agree with you, motion to adjourn.
Thank you, Ray.
All in favor?
Hi.
Hi. So when you're ready, we can resume the meeting, and we can move on with the business, we can resume.